Wednesday, February 9th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Troxel, would you please take roll call?
Yes, Madam President. Councilwoman Robin Arvinitas?
Here.
Councilman Rob Getzloff?
Present.
Councilman Kevin Conley?
Present.
Councilman Caleb Johnson?
Present.
Councilman Thomas Schmidt?
Here.
Attorney David Austin?
Present.
Fire Chief Robert Patterson?
Present.
Deputy Fire Chief David Meyer?
Here.
Police Chief Pete Sormoz?
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Steve McNamara?
Here.
Park Superintendent John Novosich?
Here.
IT Robbie Hanson?
Here.
NICE Engineering Neil Simstad?
Here.
Public Works Director Andy Hansen?
Here.
Director of Operations Jim Gorman?
Here.
Town Manager Robert Volkman?
Present.
Recording Secretary Robin Teal? And Clerk Treasurer Michael Troxel, here.
Thank you. First on the agenda would be the election of officers for the Board of Finance Committee for 2022.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to elect Tom Schmidt to the office of presidency.
We have a motion, we need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Is that an aye?
No, I didn't say aye.
So, you're a... Nay.
I guess I would ask for discussion. I didn't know that this was on the agenda as a appointment of officers. Who was president previously? Last year?
Last year. So, your vote is?
Aye.
Motion carries, five to zero. Next would be the election of secretary.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate our Clerk Treasurer Mike Troxel as the Secretary of the Finance Committee.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero, and I will hand the meeting over to our new president.
Thank you, Madam President. First, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from February 10th of 2021 public meeting.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just have a correction on those minutes, if you wouldn't mind me making that correction.
Absolutely.
On the, on item B from last year, in the second paragraph, I stated that we have current debt of $37,220,000. And that number actually should be a little lower. That number should be $37,299,833.78. So I asked if that would be, could be allowed as a correction for these minutes before they're passed.
Mr. President? Motion to approve the minutes of February 10, 2021, public meeting with the amendment as reported by our secretary.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second with the addition to the minutes of the February 10th meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five, zero. Next item's new business. Mr. Troxel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I have a few items here that, under new business. First of all, one of the items we do each year is the voiding of outstanding checks. Indiana Code 5-11-10.5 requires us to void all checks that are two years old. So these checks from December 2019 are before you now to ask for, to be voided. These voided checks go back into the respective accounts for each of these items. And that total is $10,737.63. Sure there could be a motion here in approving those.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a motion, we have a second on the, on what Mr. Troxel read on the outstanding checks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five, zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Troxel, you have another item?
Another item on the, under new business is, just for reporting purposes, in the year of 2021, we had a total collection percentage rate of 99.75%. So we collected almost 100% of our taxes, property taxes that were to be paid for the year of 2021, and that's very good. To put that in perspective of what we did in the year before in 2020 was 97.62%, as it noted. Our next item is just also for, for reporting purposes is, we've updated some of our, one of, the one last area of credit card processing that we accept. We've changed over the years the way that our customers pay their utilities through a service through iCloud, that our customers pay the service fee there. We have it on our, on our Parks Department where that fee gets paid by the consumer who uses that product. And the last leg of that was our building and planning fees that we have. We were incurring fees on that, average between $8,000 to $9,000 a year in fees we would basically pay. We changed a program, and that fee is now, will go down to approximately $4,000 a year. So we'll save up almost $5,000 in credit card fees that were normally paid. These are passed on to the consumer. They have the option of accepting those fees or not at the time that they're doing a transaction for paying for their building and planning permits. That's all I have under new business.
Mr. Austin, will we have to have a motion to accept his, the last two?
That will make your record complete, yes.
Entertain a motion to accept Mr. Troxel's two reports.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five, zero.
Next item is Clerk Treasurer's report on investments.
Mr. Troxel.
Yes. The amount of earned interest that we received in 2021 was $87,121.38. That is a down from the year before. The year before, we had $360,508.23 due to the current market with interest rates. That dropped quite a bit in 2021. So as you see, there was a big decrease in our earned interest for our, all our accounts, and also we have a $10 million certificate of deposit. So, you know, the interest was lower on that also. So all our, all our funds that we have are in interest-bearing products, and that's a result of that, of our interest earned, was that dollar amount there.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. I'll entertain another motion to accept Mr. Troxel's report on investments.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Next item on the agenda is Clerk Treasurer's report on debts or, debt service.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, I'll tell you what our, our numbers were for 2021 and what they will be in 2022 this year. Principal interest paid on our debts, which are bonds and notes, were $4,762,026.82. The principal and interest payments on our leases for 2021 were $1,431,151.58. Looking forward in 2022, this year, our principal and interest to be paid on our debt, which is bonds and notes, will be $4,707,469.27. On our leases in 2022 is the same number as 2021, is $1,431,151.58. Our total debt on leases and debt in 2022 will total $6,138,620.85, that's what we'll be paying on our principal and interest on our debts. The outstanding total debt as of January 1st of 2022 that we have is $33,540,932.60. And also included in that is, we did make our last payment on our police and town hall. That payment was made on February 1st. So we paid off a total of, well, the principal that we had was $10,698,000 on that, so we were debt-free on that. That's, that's my report on debt service.
Thank you, Mr. Troxel. I'll entertain a motion to accept Mr. Troxel's report on debt service.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Mr. Troxel, do you have anything else?
Nothing else.
Mr. Volkman, do you have anything on finance? At this time, I will open up to the floor. Is there any comment from the floor regarding our finance report that we just? No comment from the floor. This meeting will be adjourned. We'll move right into the Water Board meeting.
I'd like to call the Water Board to meeting, to order for February 9th. We'll accept the roll call from the Finance Committee, the same. I'll ask the three members, are myself, Tom Schmidt, and Kevin Conley. So at this time, I'll ask them for the approval for the minutes of the January 19th, 2022 public meeting. Pleasure, the board?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, there was a mistake there. I am on the Water Board.
Oh, you are on the...
Sorry.
Okay, no problem.
There was a change. I am on the Water Board.
All right.
As of last month. My apology.
All right.
And I am here.
All right. All right, so we are asking for approval of the minutes of the January 19th, 2022 meeting. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three, zero. Mr. Troxel, any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Pleasure, the board?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three, zero. Reports? Mr. Volkman? Okay, any reports from staff members? Council members? There is no old business and there is no new business. I'll take any business from the floor regarding waterworks, any business from the floor regarding waterworks, any business from the floor regarding water, waterworks. Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned. We'll move in now to the redevelopment meeting. Called to order the Redevelopment Commission meeting for Wednesday, February 9th, 2022. The time is 7:22. I'll bring in councilmen members, Caleb Johnson and Rob Getzloff into the Redevelopment Commission meeting. Councilman Schmidt? Minutes of the January 19th, 2022 public meeting?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes five, zero. Claims, Mr. Troxel, any additional claims?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
Thank you. Pleasure, the board? So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes five, zero. Any reports from staff for redevelopment?
No reports.
No reports. Council members?
No reports.
Thank you. We have no old business, we have no new business. Any business from the floor regarding redevelopment? Any business from the floor? Any business from the floor? Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.
Good evening. I'd like to call the Utility Board meeting for Wednesday, February 9th at approximately 7:24 PM. The roll call will stay the same from the Redevelopment Commission. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the January 19th meeting.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Claims, any additional claims, Mr. Troxel?
No additional claims, Mr. President.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor on claims?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five, zero. Any reports, Mr. Volkman, on utilities?
No reports on utilities.
Mr. Gorman?
No reports.
Mr. Hanson?
No reports.
Mr. Simstad?
No reports, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council members? No reports on utilities. We have no old business, we have no new business. At this time, I'll open up to the floor. Any business from the floor regarding utilities? Any business from the floor regarding utilities? No business, well, this meeting is adjourned. We'll move right into the Town Council.
I'd like to call to order the Town Council meeting for Wednesday, February 9th, 2022 at 7:25 PM. Roll call remains the same as the previous meeting of the Utility Board. So we will move into the first item, the minutes of the January 19th, 2022 public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next on the agenda would be claims. Mr. Troxel, are there any additional claims?
No additional claims, Madam President.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Claims, carry five to zero. Next on the agenda would be reports. So I'll start from my left. Do we have any reports from Chief Patterson?
I would like to just report that the March of January 16th, Fire Department responded to three of the MMS-related calls, 64 fire-related calls, for a total of 385 calls for the March of January 16th. That's all I have.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Dave Meyer? Thank you. Police Chief Pete Sormoz? Thank you. Deputy Chief McNamara? Thank you. Superintendent of Parks, John Novosich?
Yes, Madam President. One clerk, our Park Department will be mostly married, and we'll call them out this, there on Thursday, February 24th, from 3:00 to 6:00, at the X-Baby Center.
Thank you. Moving on, Mr. Simstad?
No reports.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson?
No reports.
Mr. Gorman?
No reports.
And Mr. Volkman?
Madam Chairman, I have one report. I've been working with Attorney Austin on revamping our animal control standards. We've been having a lot of conversation. Those being land use ordinances, they are embedded into our zoning ordinance. And so we've had some dialogue, our current, trying to strengthen our current standards where any place that has a pet store, so to speak, is only allowed in two of our zoning classes. But, and then if they board animals, they, they have to go through the variance process. Those are our current standards. We're reinforcing those where those standards will preclude the sale of dogs and cats. So you won't, won't be able to, you can have a pet store, you can sell amphibians or some other type of pets, but you won't be able to sell dogs and cats. That will be excluded in the definitions of what a pet store is. So that will, it doesn't, doesn't answer, I know that there's this term puppy mill out there, and I don't know that that has a real clear definition. I've, I've seen several of it, but we're going to try to, we're going to actually have a definition for that as well. Those will not be allowed either. Being in our land use ordinances, that does allow any petitioner that's interested in those businesses their due process rights under the Indiana Code.
Question, Mr. Volkman, will this be on our March agenda?
The process for changes to our zoning ordinance have to be vetted through the Plan Commission. That's where the public hearing takes place. So once the ordinance is prepared, it has to be advertised and vetted. The Plan Commission makes recommendation to you as Town Council to pass that. So I don't know if the March meeting, I don't know if Dave has got at that point, it does have to be advertised.
A public hearing is required at the Plan Commission level, so there'll be two opportunities for that legislation to be vetted here by both your Plan Commission and yourself. There'll be a public hearing notice published, and there'll be a presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Timing of the public hearing, Kevin, I think was left unanswered. We think we can have it at the March public meeting of the Plan Commission, and if that were the case, and they completed their assessment and certified a recommendation, it could be here next month.
Yeah, you just pointed your time there prior to the second Wednesday, you know, which would be our council meeting. I'd like to see that happen.
Yes, I would as well. Thank you.
We'll do our best.
Thank you.
I believe before we move on, we have something to add to the agenda.
Yes, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to add to the agenda, which would be, under new business, item I, donation from the floor.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. That concludes reports. Next, we have public comments regarding agenda items.
Madam President?
Sorry.
For, as far as council reports?
My fault. Do we have any council reports?
Yeah, I'd like to report on one item. As you know, at the beginning of the year, we formed a subcommittee to look at our, what we call the ARPA fund from the, from the federal government. And we have put that committee together, and we met for the first time in the last couple of weeks to start discussing how the Town of Sherrville will be spending their American Rescue Plan Act money. And we're working on that as we speak. Naturally, the majority of it will be used in infrastructure purposes, and, which is what it's designed for. Our staff just received the final version from the state a few weeks ago on what the proper items to spend that on. So we will be working very hard on that in the next few weeks to get that organized and announce what projects and how we're going to spend the money. So I think it's very important that we, we get that done, and we'll continue working on that. Thank you.
Are there any other council reports?
No, ma'am.
Not at this time.
Thank you. That does conclude reports. We were on public comments regarding agenda items. Are there any public comments regarding agenda items? No? So we will move on. We have a special presentation this evening by Councilman Caleb Johnson, Mr. Patterson, our police, our fire chief, and Dave Meyer, the deputy fire chief.
Did Dave run out?
Yeah.
Uh-oh. Well, we'll just call Bob up here, and let's have Russ and Sandy Gibson, please, come on up. Well, I'll hand this off to whoever knows. Amy Hutchinson.
Amy Hutchinson. I'm going to let Chris kick us off here.
Well, thank you, everyone, for having us this evening. My name is Chris Sarabsky. I have the honor of serving as the Awards and Advancement Chairman for the Pathway to Adventure Boy Scouts of America. For those that don't know, the Pathway to Adventure Council provides the nation's foremost youth program for character development and values-based leadership training for more than 13,000 youth across the Chicagoland and Northeast, Northeast Indiana area. More than 6,000 adult volunteers deliver scouting's impactful program to help young people be prepared for life. We operate programs from ages five to 21 in a variety of different areas.
Chris and I are going to tag team a little bit. Sorry, I have my back to y'all. My name's Amy Hutchinson, and I'm honored to serve tonight, along with Chris, to present this very important award. I serve as the Director of Camping and Program Services at Pathway to Adventure Council. Scouting programs are operated by our local chartered partners, such as religious institutions, clubs, civic associations, and educational organizations. We work with them to help implement our scouting program, which is very, very vital to our communities. These units are led entirely by volunteers, appointed by the chartered organizations, and supported by our local council, and volunteers and myself work for the council. The mission of Boy Scouts of America is to prepare our young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes, thanks to Russ, by instilling in them the values of the scouting oath and law.
So many of you know that the highest rank in scouting is the Eagle Scout. It's a pretty rare award. Not too many of our youth are able to earn it, as it is one of the best. But there's some even rarer awards that are there that don't get as much publicity. And one of them is called the Honor Medal. The Honor Medal recognizes a youth member or adult of the Boy Scouts of America where there is evidence presented in accordance with, with regulations that shows that that individual has attempted or saved a life during a particular incident with considerable risk to themselves. Additional consideration is given for resourcefulness and to be demonstrated skill and resource methods. In no case shall recognition be given where it appears that the risk involved was purely in the line of duty. So we have a fun story to share with you right now. At approximately 10 o'clock PM on the evening of November 24th, 2018, a neighbor came to the Gibson household on Shawnee Road to report that he had heard two explosions from the house next door and believed it was on fire. Jonathan Taylor Gibson, along with his father and his uncle and aunt, went to the house to investigate. Smoke was appearing from the house from a vent. Jonathan and his father went to the front door as Jonathan and aunt called 911. Because music could be heard playing inside, the reporting neighbor believed that the homeowner was home. Jonathan quickly pounded on the front door to see if it was unlocked. Entry was gained, and Jonathan found that the smoke had filled the house. Jonathan, his father, and his uncle did a sweep of the first room, and, which was the living room, and there were no humans. Great. The next room was the kitchen, which is where the music was coming from. They continued down the hallway towards the bedrooms and bathrooms while the smoke density and temperature were increasing. After searching two bedrooms without finding anyone, they discovered an active fire in the bathroom. Due to the heat level, they were not able to check the third bedroom. At this time, they decided to start putting water on the fire to see if they could get access into that bathroom in the third floor. After a few moments, the county officer arrived and advised that the owner of the property was reported to have oxygen bottles on the premises. Jonathan continued to apply water to the fire until they could gain access to the third bedroom and confirm there were no other humans. They did rescue nine bottles of oxygen, though, which is pretty awesome. The most important part of this entire incident is that no one was injured.
On behalf of the National Court of Honor, Boy Scouts of America, we are honored to be here this evening to recognize Mr. Jonathan Taylor Gibson, an Eagle Scout and resident of Shererville? Sorry? Shererville, there we go. And a fire explorer with the Shererville Fire Department. Come on up.
And we are having our fire chief and deputy fire chief here today, Bob Patterson, David Meyer, present this award, as Jonathan was a part of the Explorer program here in Shererville with our fire department, and it means a lot to them to see a young man like this potentially saving lives. Congratulations, we're very proud of you. And this is an understanding, the students that attend the Fire Explorer Program and advance and do the type of things that he has done. So it is, it is a great honor. Dave was the instructor for these young men and women that have been in the Explorer program, and to see where they've gone and what they've done, it's quite an accomplishment. So we're very proud of you, so thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Jonathan. I remember when you were running down the street, because I'm your neighbor, your little guy. Yes, yes. Thank you. There is no old business on the agenda, so we will be moving on to new business. Item A is Ordinance 1978, an ordinance annexing certain contiguous land to the Town of Shererville, Lake County, Indiana, and all matters related thereto. Petitioner, Brian Lance. Location, 12010 West 85th Avenue, 100... West 85th Avenue, 10300 West 85th Avenue, parts of 10304 West 85th Avenue. This is the first reading.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, this is a parcel on the south side of town, right by 85th Avenue, just east of Amberley Fields, or, I'm sorry, Amberfields. It's approximately 10 acres of land, and it's a voluntary annexation that the developer is looking at doing, and he's gonna be approximately developing about 21 lots in there. That's, give or take, a few lots. So that, that's why he wants to annex into the town.
Do we have services that can service them right there?
Yes.
And no, no strain on our infrastructure?
No. Yeah, subdivisions on either side of that property currently.
Madam President?
Yes.
Move to approve Ordinance 1978?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Madam President?
Yes.
There will be a schedule forthcoming on this. There'll be a fiscal plan, which will be the subject of a public hearing. That'll be next month, and an adoptive reading will take place the following month. It's approximately a 90-day time period for a voluntary annexation.
Thank you, Congress.
Thank you. Moving on to item B, Resolution 2022-2, a resolution opposing legislation regarding to the personal, to the business personal property tax, excuse me, regarding business personal property tax.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, there's a House bill currently that passed through the House that would allow the state to reduce property taxes to businesses and personal. So we are opposing it because they're not replacing any of that funding for municipalities throughout the state, cities and towns. So that'd be a, a pretty large burden on some of these small communities as well as ours. So since they're not replacing it, that's why we want to oppose this legislation. It's, it's in the Senate right now to vote on it. The House has already passed it. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution 2022-2.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Madam President?
Yes.
Will Jim or staff send a copy of this approved resolution to our legislators and make certain they have it?
Yes, we'll get that done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, award bid for the Community Crossing Grant Project 2021-2.
Thank you, Madam President. We have the bid report tabulation for the 2021-2 Community Crossings Matching Grant. We opened bids on February 8th at 9:00 AM. We had two bidders. The bid tabulation and summary report and proofs of publication are attached herein. The submitted bid cost for the Community Crossing Matching Grant application was 1.316,629 million. And our bids ranged from $1,421,830.38 to $1,439,755.21. Both bidders submitted the required bid security, non collusion affidavit, and there were no errors noted in the bids. Based on a review of the bids, the award would be made to the most responsive, responsive, responsible bidder, and the lowest would be Reed Riley Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $1,421,830.38. Any questions?
Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, Neil, is, have you been seeing that? I, I noticed that the lowest bid came in roughly $100,000 less than what was estimated over?
A higher.
I mean, I'm sorry, $100,000 more than what was estimated.
Actually, yeah, correct, Tom. We've actually seen it between 15 and 20% higher than what the, the estimated amount was. And, and that's nothing that, anything that the submitted application had to do with that. It's generally supply chain issues and inflation issues that are affecting the entire construction industry right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Madam President, how do we now handle an over, a bid that's over what our estimate is? Do we now retract our project's scope in, in some way to come within that bid range? Or do we just find those funds to, to make up the difference?
You, you find the funds to make up the difference because the, the application as submitted was awarded, and the projects included therein are to be built. So that's, that's where the additional difference needs to be made up.
Then I guess my next question would be Mr. Troxell. Do we have funds available to make up the difference? We have, it's not a significant huge increase, but it is an increase. Do we have the ability to do this?
We will, yes. We do have some funds that we can use towards a project like this to, to meet the requirements of the, of the award. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move to approve the award, the bid for the Community Crossing Grants for 2021-2 on the recommendation of our town engineer, Nisa Engineering, and our Public Works Director, Annie Hanson.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item D, consider donation to Dollars for Scholars for $1,200.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, this is a yearly donation that we do make to Dollars for Scholars. Is the same amount that we donated last year. Thank you.
So moved, Madam President?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item E, consider annual donation to the Tri-Town Safety Village for $34,500.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
This is the annual support that the three towns supply to the Safety Village. Their budget went up about $10,000 from last year to this year. Most of that is covered in, in wage and support for personnel, and covers their utility costs, telephone, and basically their operating expenses for keeping the place open and maintenance of the buildings. The request this year is for $34,500.
Madam President, I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Item E, consider the acceptance of attorney contract between Austin Kiper and Decitis PC and the town of Sherville.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, this is, uh, this is our legal firm. Mr. Austin's here tonight. He was our attorney last year. We renewed his contract, and, and this is, uh, this is just the formality to go through when we renew contracts. Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Item G.
I was on the fence.
I knew that.
Item G, consider acceptance of attorney contract between Burke, Costanza, and Carberry and the town of Sherville.
Madam President, pretty much the same thing. They were our attorney last year for some of the boards we use, and it's just a renewal of that contract.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Item H, consider acceptance of donations in the amount of $5,280.
Yes, Madam President. As of January 31st, 2022, we received the following donations. To the Town General Fund, we received from the Lake Central Blitz Football Club was an in-kind donation of 28 cases of the Double Good popcorn. In-kind value was $5,040. To the Sherville Animal Control, we received from Rain Spot, a pet donation of $5. Renee Dankovich gave a donation to the Animal Control for 10. And Mario and Laura Gomez, the Betty White Challenge, $25 for a total of $40 to the Animal Control. To the Police Equipment Fund, Jeff and Linda Witstrand gave $100 to the Police Department Equipment Fund. And to the K-9 Fund, Jeff and Linda Winstrand also to the K-9 donation of $100 to the K-9 Fund. Total of in-kind donations, $5,040. Monetary donations, $240 for a total grand donations of $5,280.
Motion to accept?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Next, we have item I, which was added to the agenda. We have a donation from the floor. If you'd like to come forward.
I am Beth Tevel, and I am the president of the American Legion, 1245, here in Sherville. And I want to thank everybody for your support. We do have bike rides, and it's fun to have you guys come out and escort us when we're allowed. But we are here in the military and donating $200 to the K-9. So I'd like to represent to you.
We need to entertain a motion to accept the donation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our agenda items. So now we would move on to business from the floor. Is there any business from the floor? If you'd come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
I'd like to say good evening. My name is H. Dean Johnson. I reside at 7412 Forest Drive, here in Sherville, in Foxville, Nebraska. I spoke with Ryan the other day in regards to the issue that we have. We know that we're in the season that we're dealing with. Lot of snow. And I'm quite aware that our public work is probably overwhelmed with all of the snow movement they have to do. But not only is the public work overwhelmed, but the residents are overwhelmed as well. And the reason I'm here is because we need to come up with something that will alleviate a lot of the problems that residents are having when the snow is being piled. On a heavy snow, when they come out to pile, they initially go down the middle of the street. So they're going down the middle of the street, and the homeowners are plowing out and snowblowing out and shoveling out dry drains and sidewalks. Public work has come in because they got to go and just curb. And in doing so, all of the snow is getting out, thrown back in our driveway. We, all of us, need to come up with a solution, not only for public work, but for residents. The society is, at the age of 45, the age of 45, you are most likely to have a heart attack starting at the age of 45. When snow falls and you have to shovel, they said 15% higher is the risk for heart attacks. I have lived at 7412 Forest Drive for 23 years. We built the house back in 1998. And we have been dealing with this issue for quite some time. I can't shovel anymore. I can't shovel anymore. I worked at a job long time ago where you could smoke. You remember that you could smoke in the office? In doing so, I have now respiratory problems from the doctor. So I can't cut grass anymore, and I can't shovel. No. I can't shovel. My nephew graduated from college, lives downtown Chicago. I have a brother, one brother in the house, that has to do all of the snowblowing on the corner of Forest Drive. We all know that most corner houses get most of the snow. One person has to do that. It's cold outside, isn't it? When it snows, the wind chill, but they gotta go out there to snowball and shovel. Freezing. We don't know how long you have to be outside before you can get the snow. So you got to try to take shifts. So he goes out there maybe three times to do all that work. Cause he's the only one that can do it. My mother had a stroke. It would be four years, a massive stroke. So in case of emergency, I'm not sure who I spoke with from public work, but he informed me that if an ambulance comes down the street, they bring a snow pile with them. I don't know if that's true or not, to pile you out so that you can get to the house. I spoke with Ryan. He was a very nice lady. She told me, Mr. Johnson, we will send someone out. We'll send someone out to try to get you out. My brother went out, tried to clear the end of the drive. Well, public works, they came. But they went across the street. I'm glad that they shoved out my neighbors' ends of the driveway. But I gave Ryan an address that said 7412 Forest Drive. And they never came over to my family's home. We are elderly people that live in there. And those that can shovel, those that can snow blow, they tried their hardest to help the elderly people. Shovel out. But public work comes back from it, and throw it all back. Now, the gentleman told me that they tried to shove out your mailbox. Well, my brother had already shoveed out, no, out the mailbox. So the postman didn't drive it out. But you know what the house did? They came back home and threw it all back up on my mailbox. But I thought, they told me they shoved out the mailbox, that it didn't happen. I'm here because not only myself, but my neighbors and people that I have spoken to, that live in this great town of Sherville, say they're civic and tolerant. I spoke with my councilwoman, Barbara. I want to thank you for returning my call. I want to thank you for being sympathetic, even though there's not much you can really do. But at least you were sympathetic. Nothing on my child has to use her timing off. Know why? You piled them in. They had to haul. They had to haul a service just to get was $100 just to remove the snow from the end of the driveway. And she's the sister of our daughter, John Potts. Something needs to be done. There was a year I walked out from a house. You ever saw it? They come by, they sit and wait for you to finish shoveling and snowblowing. They sit and wait. And the minute you finish and you walk in, they can clean up everything and you're freezing. Time to walk after that. They just try to find everybody and throw it back. I don't know what the solution is, but I got one. That's the finance man sitting over there. I hear about you talking about finding money. You know, when the plows go through and finish, you got these little trucks that come by afterwards. Well, they should be cleaned up. So they need to go in and pull that snow out. But you know what they do? Because when my sister was trying to get to work, my neighbor across the street, Mr. Mike, had to come over, cussing, trying to help shovel her out. You know, we have to make a living. You want cash, you don't. You want property tax, you don't. So had to shovel her out by him, cussing because he couldn't get out. So now he's out in the hole again trying to help shovel my sister out. Wow, they had done it already. But the little truck that comes by threw it back. They're sitting in warm vehicles and they plow down the street. Warm vehicles. Yes, they got a lot of work to do. They got a lot of streets to plow. But the residents are out in a element that is dangerous. And somebody needs to start caring about the people that are out there trying to remove snow so that all of us can go make a living. I don't know what more to say because I'm pretty sure that the people that are sitting in this room are scared. And I'm pretty sure that the people sitting in this room would like to have a solution with all of them. So I before this [inaudible] and those that are appointed to take care of our house, how do we marry in order that residents also can have peace of mind? This is not fair, guys. This is not fair. And I guarantee you, you may say, no, no. But I guarantee you that in the neighborhood in which they probably live, they're not throwing the snow back in the driveway. So when they get home, they got to get out and shovel. Thank you very much. Hopefully I'll get some responses. Hopefully we can come to some sort of conclusion in which we can solve this enormous problem. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming out and explaining the situation. Does anyone have any comment regarding that at this time? Mr. Hanson?
See if we can come up with something that'll work. I'm all ears. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any other business from the floor? Any other business from the floor? Then at this time, this meeting is adjourned.